Okay, we'll go ahead and call the budget meeting to order. Budget.
Pretty exciting night tonight. That was a lot of work. We got something very, very big, something very, very impactful done. We've still got a couple other steps to go on it. But I, from a staff perspective, I'm very proud of the effort that staff and our team has put in. Brian, I mean, we've got people that we didn't voice. So, I mean, you know, we had Karen Crane over in Visitors Bureau helping us with things. I mean, Jennifer helped with some of this. Donna clearly helped with this. We had come up with money. We had to talk to the PD and Fire Department and all of the things and hey, what does this mean to our community? What does this mean to our level of services? And so this was really a team effort and this is one of those, what I believe to be one of those transformational things. This is going to be one of those things that's really going to reinvent that corner. Is it going to be perfect? Is it going to create problems? It's going to create some problems. There's a traffic issue up there today. I mean, there really is. But, you know, that's going to perhaps force some other conversations with KDOT because it's a state highway where we can, you know, really kind of say, hey, we've, we're here and we need some, we need some help and maybe kind of force that issue a little bit. But, but pretty, pretty, pretty exciting times. Budget work session. Tonight's an exciting night. We, I don't know, do I need to speak into the mic? Tonight's a pretty exciting night. We, we not only talked about our, our long vacant Kmart project, but we're going to present the general fund budget tonight. We're several, actually several fund budgets. Donna's put a lot of work into this. Staff's put a lot of work into this, putting this together. Council, goals and objectives, kind of our first document that is our kind of guiding light on the things that we need to make sure that we include in the budget. So appreciate the input that you've put in there. I say every year that this is the most important document that we put together, the budget document. It is a value statement. We value things, so we fund them and they end up in the budget. And generally, we value them to the rate that we're willing to subsidize them. Public safety, we love it. We gotta have it. He's not making us any money. He's costing us money. So, but we value that in our community. So we fund it. We subsidize it. We budget. Park and Rec. We don't make a whole heck of a lot of money on most things outside of that community center. Parks don't make us a whole lot of money, but they improve the caliber of our lives. They give us something to do. They are recreational opportunities. They do add to the fulfillment and what we value as being important in our community, just like public art. That adds to the value of things that, that we think are important. So when we, when we talk about putting things in the budget, we put things in the budget because we value them. So I just kicked that off because I know this is the first budget cycle for several of you. You know, the budget statement is more than just Xs and Os, dollar signs. It's a value statement. So when we put it together, that's the way staff approaches it. What are the things that we value as a community that we've heard explicitly or implicitly from our council and from our residents? So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Donna. She's got a lot of good information to share with you. I'll probably frequently interrupt. Brian's going to spend a little bit of time talking about some things that I think are going to be important to each of you and our residents. And then we'll wrap it up in the end. That being said, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. First of all, we're going to talk about what budgeted, what funds we're going to be passing a budget for in August. Kind of look at some of the highlights of the draft budget. Look at the budget overview for all the funds. Talk about the revenue neutral rate and lastly, at the budget calendar. This graphic shows the, all the funds that we'll be budgeting for. General Fund, that's our main operating account, basically, unless something's required to go in somewhere else, it goes in here. This is the biggie. Special Revenue Funds, this relates to funds that we are restricted to spend certain revenues in a certain way. We get funds from the state that we put in a special highway fund that have to be used to maintain roads, for instance. Debt Service is exactly what it sounds like. It's our, where we pay our principal and interest on our bonds. And then the Capital Projects, the Capital Improvement Fund where we pay for our capital projects. And the Equipment Reserve where we pay for our major equipment. Some of the big highlights, and we'll go over these in a little more detail on later slides, but some of the highlights. This budget would approve a 3% salary increase. There is one new position requested. It's for an Assistant to the City Administrator. All the current services that were funded in the 2022 budget are fully funded in the 2023. It also provides for implementation of a compensation study. The recommendations from it, right now, there is a compensation study underway. And we would expect to get the results of that, like in September. We have no idea what those recommendations obviously would be, but we're going to go ahead and budget so that we have at least some funding to implement that. Has replacement of some park equipment. It has public works, police and parks equipment, and then also some additional grant opportunities. General Fund expenditures. The budget for 2022 allowed for 21.5 million in expenditures. The proposed 2023 would be 24, or I'm sorry, 23 point, just right at five, for an increase of 8.9%. Now, 4.4 million of that is transfers. If you look one line above that and you can see just the operating where we're not just moving money around. It's the 17.4 to the 19 million. The makeup of where that money would be expended. You've got your capital improvement and equipment. That's the transfers over to the Capital Improvement Fund and your Equipment Reserve Fund. That's about 20% of the budget. Then you've got police, court, fire, public works, park and community development. That makes up about 62% of the budget. And then you, you have your administration and then some overhead accounts. I'm going to let Mr. Engel talk about this slide, but this is the one new position. And it is the Assistant to the City Administrator position.
Sure. Thank you. So this is a position that has some broad utility to it. It's a position, it's a position I know very well. It's a position I started at. This is a position that you start as you're working your way up into the profession. So it is an administrative position. You're a member of the management team. It usually has a functional area that it operates. When I was the Assistant to the City Administrator, my functional area was I served as the Park and Rec Director. So it's, that's, that's pretty common for this particular position. What this particular position in our organization's oversight area would be the web. So there would be web design, web integration, any of the third-party web things that we would plug into the web. So it would also be special projects. This is a special projects in terms of, we've got a strategic plan that we have budgeted that we have not done because we just haven't had the capacity. A lot of it, we've freed up some capacity now that we've approved this project earlier tonight. But in process improvement, so there was, there's been conversation about an internal position for innovation. I don't think that that's a full-time position. I don't think that's even a half-time position, but I think there's some value to that position. Having someone that we can look at and say, okay, hey, is there a way that we can do this a little bit better? Even with an eye towards tech, because that's not something generally that we think of at the staff level. Liaison to the City Council. Somebody to ride herd over the goals and objectives. Somebody that can be a liaison with the City Council. It's a point of contact for City Council, for NLC, for, you know, when you need something that we don't, you know, that, that we can do, we're happy to do. But if you had a point of contact, we think this would be a person that would be good for that. I don't think that that's, that's a small sliver of what they would do, but that's what this person would do because it gives them exposure to not only the management team, but to the elected officials. So this is a position that eventually works its way, if not in this organization, in another organization, into being an Assistant City Manager or a City Manager or Administrator. Employee Engagement Manager. We've got several initiatives that we do internally. That's Safety Committee, Z Team, which is our, Z Team is our zeal team, which is our values team, Green Team, things like that, where we actually have things that are inward-facing that we think that this, this position could play an active role in. It would report to the City Administrator. It would be Pay Grade 16. That pay grade in the 2023 salary schedule is 52 to 78. That's the same as the City Clerk. It's the same as Accountant, Court Administrator, Visitors Bureau. So there's no supervisory requirement to this position. But it's someone that would be at our council meetings. It's someone that could handle some of the feedback loop with the City Council. Because I share, I do quite a bit of that, but it would be nice to have someone else that could close some of that feedback loop, to be quite honest with you. I can continue to do that and would be happy to do it, but it'd be nice if I had someone that could do some of that. That's, it's a pretty broad job description. It's, it's a step above an intern, to be quite honest with you, which we have an intern in the budget. We've had an intern in the budget for five years. Likely, and we have an intern currently that is on staff. Likely, we would not fill the intern position. We wouldn't need an intern position if we had an Assistant too. We've kind of chugged along and just have interns from time to time to do some of these functions, but it doesn't have continuity. An intern's probably cheaper than a full-time employee. I'll be in full disclosure. But we probably would jettison the, the intern, which is an authorized FTE, if we went with an Assistant to the City Administrator. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Go ahead. Okay, I was just going to say, the thing to, the impetus for this position is simply that we're doing more. We're adding more. And it's at the administrative level. We've got lots of things that we all would like to be, to get accomplished. That while we, it's great, we have the FTE count that we do. There's only a handful of positions that can do a lot of the things that the council's interested in. There's Jennifer and there's myself. Jennifer oversees nine FTEs that, you know, the Court Administrator, HR, IT, Visitors Bureau. You know, so those are, so that's kind of the biggest piece of her position. I do department heads deal with the City Council. So having an Assistant too would be somebody that could, as it says here, full range of highly complex staff assistance and administrative analytical support. It'd be somebody that I could go, hey, go figure out what it costs to deliver services per resident. And does that make sense? As opposed to me spending a day and a half trying to chase down your math. And, you know, to, and to come back and give you, say, hey, here's what I think we found. Not to pick on you, but I mean, those, those are the type of things that I currently do. And I'm happy to do them, but it would be nice to have someone that could help do that as we continue to take on larger and more complex projects. So that's. I know, I know you do, but I have to double check it though. I trust but verify. I trust but verify.
Well, and I have the same thing. So all these years that we've gotten the iPads to do our work on. And whenever I get stuck, which, you know, these things were so easy and intuitive, who gets stuck? I end up calling Julie. So I want somebody who knows how to use the apps that we're supposed to be using.
Sure. And, and that would be something that clearly.
But it's, it's nebulous because it says other computer software systems as necessary. That puts it on the back burner, just like it is for everybody else right now.
Well, with, yeah, if, in this role as the liaison. So for example, this would be something you would absolutely remember. We met one another because I was the Assistant too in my previous.
I remember very well.
And my job was to accompany the council to chamber events and to NLC and to places like that. So that's where I met you and Nancy Hupp. Because that was the assistant's job in my previous place was to serve as that liaison to, you know, accompany council, to work with council on special initiatives. So again, that is not the number one thing. I'm not trying to use that to sell this position, but that's what this position would be good at. They would be an administrative function. They would have, you know, they would be plugged into all of the department heads. They'd be plugged into myself. So it, it would be useful to have that. That is not, that's not 50% of their job. It's not, I mean, I guess it could be on a, on a rough week, but.
I want you to know I'm very supportive of having this. I recognize the value.
I see the value of this position as well. I just, when I think about the job description after, if this person ever decides to leave.
Sure.
Because the person who wants this position helped, basically wrote the position.
Sure.
And, and it seems like there's a lot of skills there that might be hard to find if this person leaves. And that's a concern for me. I think maybe that's my only concern.
Yeah, I would address that by saying the, I, in full disclosure, I sent an early version of the, the job description to several folks in and out of the organization just to get some feedback on it, just to kind of go, what does this look like to you? And, and that, that is not the job description. That, there are pieces of that that have been embedded in this, but, but it has been reprioritized to actually meet a position that I've shared with the mayor and, and the council president a year, year and a half ago, that this day was going to come sooner or later. Sooner or later, we were going to need to expand our, our capacity at the administrative function. So yes, I, I agree. That was, and that was shared just simply to say, what do you see value in there? So that I could figure out what could fill some of these things that the council would see value in. So I think I put in the email, I think I even said, hey, I'm going to reserve a right to give you my opinion about any of this until I hear from you. And I do appreciate the feedback that I received from several folks telling me what their, their opinions were of that. So yeah, so the job description is not the same.
Okay. And I do want to apologize. I just looked back at your response and you asked me a question and I failed to answer it.
Oh, that's fine.
So, sorry about that.
That's fine.
My question is going to be, where does this fall on the organizational chart?
Yeah, so it would probably not fall on the org chart, but if it fell on the org chart, it would just be an offshoot of the City Administrator. It would just be a person that would sit next to me if, if we put it on the org chart. This job, a, a visual description of what this job really ultimately would do, other than being the web administrator, is they will play in the white areas between the boxes on the org chart. Because they very well could be helping out the Police Department with something. They could be helping administer new grants. They could be working with Park and Rec on something. They, I will structure this position very similar to the one that I had. I served in the interim role as a Public Works Director when I was the Assistant too, because somebody had to be down there when we needed one. And we needed someone with administrative and managerial capacity. So it, it would be very similar. So it's hard to put a job description on some of, because some of it really is other duties as assigned. But, but my intention is that they are, they very well could be, in any given special project, working with any one of our departments or with our council, or simply going out and saying, hey, go figure out what the story is with the downtown partnership because we're trying to move something along on the Upper Turkey Creek project. And being able to know that they're competent, to know that they have some managerial, some tact. They've got some level of education and understanding of how local government works. And we ultimately can trust them to go do those things. And not that we can't trust other individuals, but we have other individuals in our organization that already have roles. This would be a new role.
And they'll have a little more authority than an intern.
They will. They will absolutely. They will.
To handle those conversations.
Correct. They will be operating with the authority of the City Administrator, which operates with the authority of the City Council. That doesn't mean that they can boss people around, but it means if they're, if they're talking about something, they're talking about something that has likely been vetted, that that's, you know, they're not off on their own, going rogue on some sort of weird topic that they want to incorporate.
So does PV, does Prairie Village still have an Assistant to the City Administrator?
They don't. So what Prairie Village has done is Prairie Village, when I was there, we had a man, we had the City Administrator, the Assistant City Administrator and the Assistant too. They now have a City Administrator, a Deputy City Administrator and two Assistant City Administrators and an intern.
And they're smaller than us?
They're not smaller than us, but their organization is about the same size as ours. Their city's larger, but their organization.
Right, sorry, I meant like their organization.
Yeah, so they, so since I left and, and trust me, Nolan, who's the City Manager, and Shawnee was in that position after I was there. Danielle, who was in Lenexa, is the City Manager of Warrensburg. We all said, we need more people when we're in Prairie Village. And as soon as we left, Wes came in and hired, you know, he's got a management staff of five managers.
And other things, sorry, real quick. I think of this as kind of like a project manager for the city.
It is.
Like, I mean, as a project manager myself.
Special projects, but they will be a webmaster also. I mean, we need someone that can, that can ride herd over the web. Because we will have to fill, if, if this is an internal move, which we have a candidate that's internal that we think would be good for this position. We will need to fill that position. So we want this person to continue to be the web administrator, which is not really, I don't see as that big of a deal. I mean, that's, that's not a full-time job, being a web administrator. But we do need people that can, as we continue to try to integrate new things into the web. Somebody that can ride herd over that, somebody, you know, we've got CitizenServe, that's, that's our software that the clerk uses, that codes use, that needs to be integrated in there. It, it needs to be better utilized. So we need somebody that can continue to make sure that those things are meaningful. But special projects is listed number two here because that's probably going to be likely the majority of what they do.
So why wouldn't that web admin stay with the new, like the new person that you're going to backfill, I guess?
Well, because.
Because of the longer history of.
We've put too much work on that position. That, that position has become one of those positions where I don't know that we could hire that position as it is.
Got it.
Because we've put so much stuff on it. So for those, well, I think there's only two people that have been around. We used to have Christie. And remember, Christie did stuff for everybody. And when Christie was gone, it took months to figure out, hey, how come this isn't getting done? Oh, well, Christie used to do it. Why are you not doing it? Well, because we gave it to Christie. And so it, it has started to kind of take on that form. So we're trying to figure out, can we, can we divide and say, this is a graphic design position and it's communications-related. It works like this. Webmaster, we can pull out of there because it's almost an IT function, even though it is a communication. There is some graphic piece to it, but we feel like we can pull that out a little bit differently.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm not checking out. Yeah. I'm not checking out. I want, I want, I want, that's a great question. That's a, that's a fair, that's a fair, absolutely. My, my intention would be that there are things that I get that I can forward and say, hey, please take care of this. And that is, that's, there's a fair amount of questions like that. But then there are a lot of questions that I, I like to make the response because I like it a special way. I want to make sure it's crafted and answers correctly and all, you know. So I take pride in those emails that I send sometimes. And I will continue to do that. But I think there are some things that you just, hey, what's the story with this? And, you know, I mean, I get asked a lot of stuff where it's, the answer's on the website or the answer's a link here or something like that. Where that, that, that stuff I could be able to just pawn off and just say, hey, here's an answer. And as this position, as the person in this position continues to learn, you, I, my assumption is you will learn to be more comfortable with them and likely you'll know, I'm going to this person for this. I'll go to Chris for this, or I'll go to Jennifer for this, or whoever it is. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
What, what?
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I am not, I'm not disappearing. I'm not checking out. Yeah.
It just sounds to me like there's a need for some delegation and that need can be filled and other people's roles are expanding. There is a need for this. It's been coming for a while.
Yeah, that's a great summary. Yeah. And again, my, my list of things that, that need to be done with this organization, there's really two of us that most of those things at least need to be the project manager on or at least start and devote our attention to it. Not that we can't hand some of those off to departments if they're department-related. But it'd be nice to have that special project manager that, that, you have that constant feedback loop. Hey, where are you at on this? What are you doing? Where are we? So that, that's, to me selfishly, that has a lot of appeal.
Well, the benefit from my perspective is that we all know government moves slow and Merriam moves a lot faster than a lot of other governments. But having someone who can help with these types of things that we as a council are really interested in, you know, like Green Team, like stuff like that, like Jennifer's doing, moving that stuff forward really fast. But if we add another body into that, think about what the other special projects that we want to do, we can see that same kind of movement.
That's, that's the hope.
Okay.
That's, that is the plan. That is the intention.
Oh my God, stealing Stacey's thunder.
That would be absolutely, this would be a job that would probably, because that would be, I mean, you need someone to do that, but it's not a full-time job. So this would, this would likely be the candidate for that if we did that.
And then this would start '23, like January or?
One, one to '23. Yeah. So we would, you know, we, we'll, I, I, do you have a copy of the job description?
Yeah.
The job, okay. Yeah. So we'll, we'll probably maybe refine a few things on there. But I mean, that is, that's probably a 90 to 95% what that job description is going to look like.
And then in.
At least as proposed.
Hopes that you would ideally back, you know, hire the person that you think and then backfill before.
Correct, so that we can have some crossover.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we will, we have been and can continue to operate in the absence of this position. This is, it's, this isn't a luxury. I mean, I would say it's needed or I wouldn't ask for it. I mean, I have not asked for, this is my seventh budget. And if you normalize for Park and Rec, we have less FTEs today than we did my first budget. Because we have cannibalized FTEs for everything that we've added. So facilities, really a sub-department, those, I made Jim give up FTEs to, to have that. You know, when we add other things, we actually, I mean, and, am I lying? I mean, no, honestly, Jim's like, I need another mechanic. I said, hey, who's, who's cutting grass? Because I need you to, because I take that seriously.
Mechanic, also webmaster.
Yeah, FTEs, FTEs is, is, you know, I have prided myself on the fact that our good fortune we've had over the last several years has not gone towards building the empire. It has gone to, you know, taking care of the city. It's creating opportunities to help our residents. It's taking care of our infrastructure. So that if things start to go haywire or things aren't as good as they are at some point in time, we could decide to slow down on CIP and things won't fall apart. Like they do in some cities when the recession came and now they have to borrow money and they're scrambling to fix things. Or when '08, '07, I'm sorry, that was COVID during, or the recession in '07, '08. Yeah, a lot of people that got behind, and it took them a decade to get over. They had to borrow money. Because they, that's how they stopped, you know, but it was because they were repairing streets at such a lower level. The fact that we're taking care of all of our infrastructure allows us a little bit of freedom if things go bad. It's almost like a contingency plan. Yes, sir.
Yeah. We will have a Assistant City Administrator and an Assistant to the City Administrator.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the Assistant too would be, would work directly with me on projects. Whereas the Assistant is a department head position. So the Assistant oversees all of our inward-facing departments and a few other external ones. So there's eight direct reports, seven direct reports?
So there's six and then there are some within.
Within those. So, so the Assistant, who, who helps in a lot of great ways and is, does fantastic work, but they're a department head. So they're actually overseeing a lot of internal functions that occur that requires her attention. So having the Assistant too, again, is, it's, it's a, it's a nice needed addition. That, that is the position. I'm happy to answer any other questions about it or we'll, we can tally on the vote on that later or? Yeah, we can't really do any formal votes, but I would say. We'll, we'll wait till we get to the end and we'll see how the rest of the conversation.
Okay. So this looks, this is a comparison between the proposed budget and the current budget. It does include the new position we just talked about. And one other thing that it includes, if you look under salaries, it says General Fund, Transient Guest Tax, CIP, and then it has Comp, Comp Study Implementation. And that's what I was referring to before. That's just a block of money. We have no idea how much, when we get the compensation study back, that it would in fact take to bring positions up to market. I know as Mr. Engel and I have talked, really, the city's done a great job of keeping our ranges over the years. really, the city's done a great job of keeping our ranges over the years in check. Every year, we bump them up by inflation, et cetera. And so we have pretty good feelings that maybe we're not going to have nearly this big of an impact, but we just want to set it aside. And then whenever we get the study back, staff will be bringing that to city council, and we'll discuss it more.
And it and it can only be used as salaries. I mean, that's not something that we can cannibalize for something else. We wanted to put it in there, so it's not something that we on our own could go, we could come back to council and say, hey, we only needed 200,000 of it. Can we buy a F three fifty with the other, or whatever it ends up being. But yeah, it it will have to go towards salaries. It would have to come to council if we were to use it otherwise.
In our 2022 budget, how many open positions have we been having? What's what's the difference between our 2022 actual and our 2022 budget?
In terms of FTEs?
Salaries and just FTEs in general. Because we're running under budget, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Because we have
Absolutely.
A number of open positions.
We, I don't know how many we have open, but.
Right. I mean, well, they've just become through retirement.
We got five police officers.
Right, and so.
Right.
So so if we made this comparison between our projected 2022 actual and our 2023 proposed, it's not going to be 11%. It's going to be 15 or 16 or 17%. Because our budget is all of these positions that are.
Yeah, the budget assumes 100%.
Yes, yes and no. I mean, you are correct. We will not, any given year, there are going to be vacancies. There's going to be people coming and going. And we always budget as if we're fully staffed the whole year. And so you're absolutely right. This is probably going to be, this is how much was budget. I forecast that we're going to spend about 95%, 94% of our budget this year. So you can assume that. What you can also, though, you also have to look at is that next year, we're not going to be fully the whole year either, but we have to budget as if we're going to. And that will be, if you look at forecasted of what we'll really spend in 22 versus forecasted of what we'll actually spend in 2023, it's not going to be that 15%. Does that make sense? In order to kind of compare apples to apples?
We're we're not spending that on the study. That's just for implements that. We've already paid for the study. That's for if they come back and say, hey, yeah, so so that's the equivalent of, and and again, Donna did a great job of saying that I think we've been, we feel, which is this is just feelings. We we feel like we've been pretty competitive over the years. We have half, that half million dollars would would be an 11 11% increase to everybody in the organization. We do not believe that everybody in the organization is going to get or needs an 11% increase to to because of the market study. But that's. The market study is not complete. We will not have it until September. So we have to put something in the budget to account for what we assume is going to be an implementation dollar figure. But we don't want to put it in the salaries and and say, we assume that everybody's going to need whatever. We just picked half a million, like, we originally had a million in there, and I was like, if we need a million dollars, we've really not been doing our job. You know, we can't be that far off. So we we put a half billion dollars in there because we're hopeful that when they come back and say, okay, her position needs to go up by 4%, and your position needs to go up by 15%, and your position doesn't need to go anywhere. I mean, that's what the comp study does. Comp study is going to come back and say, you have these two sergeants who probably need to be making more money. You don't need to give any of the other sergeants any more money, other than our regular increase, which is already built into the general fund number. So that is just to implement whatever the study says. So I mean, it's literally going to come out and say, you should pay Tony 5% extra. You should give Sue 13% extra. You don't need any money. So but that's enough money for everybody to get 11% increase. We're not giving everyone a, but that's just to tell you scope and scale of, that's a, that's why we put that in there. Because we sure don't think we're that far off. I hope we're not that far off, or again, I think that we've we probably in short change in our staff if we're that far off. And I don't think we have been. I feel like we've been very fair and competitive with our staff. Right. And and it 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 could come out that we, there's been a, there's been a run on police officers. There's been a run on public works employees that have CDLs. It's quite possible in those departments. If you're going to ask me my opinion, and I'd be scared, I hesitate to give it because it's just an opinion. Probably, if you were to say this is the mid-range of all of our salaries, my guess is, is probably the vast majority of whatever we need to implement, that study is going to need to go to the bottom. It's going to be our entry-level positions that probably we've gotten behind on, because that's, you know, again, there's run on CDLs, there's run on police officers. So as those rates go up, we have to, we have to stay competitive because we don't want to get behind. You know, I mean, so that's probably where the majority of our money is going to go. But that's why we have a study, because that's, these are our opinions. These are, these are our beliefs. We don't know. We need somebody that specializes in this, that actually is doing the survey of all of the other cities around us to say, oh, yeah, you're you're, excuse me, you're behind. Or, hey, you're actually doing pretty well. That's what we hope to hear, but we're planning to not hear that. Does that make sense? Yeah, that's that's not just for the, that's the implementation of. Yeah, we've already paid. The study was 45, 50? I don't know. Yeah, it was.
I I thought it was Jennifer. How much was the salary, the compensation study? Wasn't it around 30,000?
Yeah, so.
About 30.
Yeah, so so we paid 30 to be told we need a half a million.
Right.
Maybe.
But we think it'll probably be less, but we don't know. And with that, I'm going to let Brian come up. You haven't near heard nearly enough from him tonight.
Well, he comes up, I just would, just to add a little bit more to the salary survey, because I mean, that's that is a chunk of change. As a reminder, the last salary survey we did, we did in 2013. We have not done one since 2013. So what we have done is just continued to implement that plan, which is why I'm fairly certain we're not way out of whack. But it's been since 2013. We were going to do this. This was approved in 2019 for the 2020 budget, but we didn't feel like, as the world was falling apart, it made sense to say, how can we pay our public sector employees more money when we've got people that are sitting on the sidelines at home, you know, not getting paid at all? So we didn't do it in 20. We pushed it to 21. We still had the pandemic, so we didn't do it in 21, which means we got even a little bit further behind. Now, we're really got, you got the, again, the effect of, you know, the great resignation or whatever it is, and this run on wages and the empowerment of workers, what I think is a great. I personally think that's a fantastic feature that that workers are going to be compensated more. It makes it very difficult to run an organization that has workers when you're trying to anticipate what you need to pay them. That's why we're doing that study now, is because we we need to. It's overdue. Thank you.
All right. Kind of going to go over.
Kind of.
I'm going to go over our proposed city funded budget, city-funded grants for 2023, as you all are aware of. We're aware of, we have a number of successful grant programs that have helped our residents make improvements to their homes, which obviously makes great improvements to their neighborhoods, makes great improvement to the city, and also helps some of our residents are a little bit more disadvantaged to, you know, stretch the dollars a little bit further. So for for 2023, the proposed grants are exterior home improvement grant, franchise fee rebate, historic downtown, neighborhood block party, residential sustainability, driveway repair, and residential city property tax rebate, and compost bin rebate. Again, those are all existing ones. So new programs, proposed ones for 2023 are small grant, pro small project grants, distribution of energy savings kits, a stormwater grant, and a residential tree grant. So I'm going to briefly run through all of these things, give you a little bit more detail about them. Again, some changes to our existing programs. So exterior home improvement grant, we're proposing to increase funding from 70,000 to 120,000. Over the years, we've heard a lot of comments from the city council about, one, like to lower the barriers to entry to these programs. Two, may provide a little more assistance in what in the repairs and things like that that could happen with residents. So we're anticipating if we do those things, we are going to increase the number of people who are one to going to participate, and obviously increase the amount of payout that we're doing on. Additionally, the exterior home improvement grow, home improvement grant is prior, is our most popular grant. We usually have all the fun funding allocated for that grant, but usually by, you know, May, June. We're still looking for people to be in that grant, because there's a little bit difference between allocating money and actually getting it expended. But and but we usually have that program fully funded, excuse me, fully allocated by June, July of the year. So again, increase funding, increase the reimbursement from 20% to 30% of our project maximum. So also increase the maximum reimbursement from 2,000 to 2,500. So that'd be the maximum amount that we reimburse a resident for a project. Reduce the time between receiving a grant from 10 years to five years. So right now, if somebody received a grant, they have to wait 10 years to reapply. So if we change that to five years, what that will mean is the folks who got the received a grant the very first year of this program could reapply in 2023. That's kind of hard to believe, but yeah, we've done this program now for almost five years. And then reducing the minimum homeowner investment from 2,500 to $2,000.
If I if I could, I think what what, before David goes, what we heard at the last council meeting was that we wanted to, and Brian did a good job explaining it, that we heard that council wants to lower the barriers of entry, you know, make it easier for folks, and spend some more money on those grants, because they do impact people's lives. They impact neighborhoods. I think that community development and public works that administers, the majority of all those grants have done a good job kind of crafting those around things that don't just improve you as an individual's situation, but actually improves the neighborhood. I mean, it actually makes, you know, it it has spin-off value, we would call it, because it's something that, you know, when you, when you fix up your house, when you're in your house, you don't look at the outside of your house. I look at the outside of your house, right? And so so that actually has some spin-off value, even though we're helping you. It actually improves all the neighborhood. So just wanted to point out that we, I think you'll see by some of these changes that I think we heard loud and clear that council appreciates these grants and wants us to, if we can, administer them to more folks. And hopefully, we didn't overestimate that. David.
Question that I've talked about before, I forgot what your answer was, regarding folks that want to experience program, but really about providing your own labor, opposed to and if they get some credit for providing.
Right, right. That is on, that you have brought that up, and that is on the list for us to review for next year's program. Because I understand exactly what you're what you're inquiring about, what you are suggesting. First of all, just make sure everybody understands, we do not reimburse for for your own labor. We don't reimburse that. But actually, if, but but there should be some credit for providing that later. Yeah, yeah. No, I understand that, and that's part of what we'll be looking at for 2023. Which, so we'd also would reduce the amount, potentially could reduce the amount that a homeowner investment could potentially reduce the cash amount that a homeowner would have to invest and participate in the project. So yes, we are, we as part of the notes that I have to look at. No, no, this is kind of a high level at this point in time to kind of do for budgetary person.
But it but it would affect these grants if approved. Yes. So so this is high level of what we propose these grants to be. This is not fleshed out. Here's what the form looks like. This is exactly what's reimbursed. This is the high-level money stuff that we want to make sure the council's okay with. We'll come back and flesh some of, especially the new grants, out a little bit more. We just want to make sure that we're reading what the council wants, and these dollar figures and these barriers to entry are lowered appropriately.
Do you need to say, Andrew, some people, some people that are, for example, know a trade, are
Sure.
Performance to standards, they ought to also be able to contribute that as part of their contribution in some way, and I appreciate your.
Okay, so for residential sustainability grant, again, suggesting increase it from 30 to $65,000. It was interesting, as I mentioned at, I think, last month's meeting, on this grant residential, we had some money in in there that hadn't been allocated. Heatwave hit, and suddenly everybody was getting new energy-efficient air conditioning units and HVAC systems. This is obviously a program to help reduce our overall city mayor and carbon footprint. This is also a great program to to get folks to recognize the things they can do around their house, just instead of just putting in a low-efficiency window, they can put in a high-efficiency window. We can play that offset. So we've we really find that as we manage this program, we're able to to get folks to do maybe a little bit more in regards to sustainability, again, to reduce the amount of of amount of carbon footprint that that the city has. So again, increase it from 30 to 65,000. Create, again, just like the residential exterior grant program, increase the reimbursement from 20 to 30%. Max reimbursement is from 2,500 to 3,000. Reduce the wait time, and minimal homeowner investor, reduce that minimum amount they got to got to invest from 2,500 to $2,000.
The way you're trying to apply across all grants, or is that each city grant?
Yeah, so somebody, you, so if you had a, if you got a residential exterior grant program, you do not have to wait to apply for sustainability program.
And you can combine grants, too.
Correct. You can combine. We actually, David, Neighborhood Services Manager, David Easley, who's the one that administers a lot of these, he does a really good job of kind of shuffling folks around when they come in with just one big project to try to maximize the amount that they can get back and and return the grants. So so residential sustainability, neighborhood block credit grant, increase funding for 2,500 to $5,000, increase maximum reimbursement from 200 to 300. We really think that as folks get out amongst themselves even more, this is going to be even more popular grant. Franchise fee rebate program, increase funding from 5 to $6,000. Increase the income level from 50% area median income to 80% of the area median income. That's going to be a, again, that obviously is going to increase the pool of folks who can participate in this program. So just as an example, so for a family of four, for 2021, at a 50% of area median income, a family of four was for, is $48,400. That's the area, 50% of area median.
Is it 48 or 43?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. $43,300. So for a family of four. So for twen, to change that, so those folks who make that amount or below can participate in this program. If we if there, if we decide to change that standard, so for next year, for 2020, we'd be using 2022 income guidelines, that same family of four now is going to be at at 80% will be $77,450. So obviously, really increases the number of folks who can are eligible to participate in the program. So hence the reason, again, why we're suggesting increasing the amount of funding.
Do we think that the increase in funding will match all the new applicants roughly?
This one's going to be a hard one to, they're all going to be hard to figure out. But this this program, we do not use all of the $5,000 right now. We do not. We do not use all of the $5,000 for this program.
But but to be clear, I'm just going to put it a different way, just so we understand. That means any family of four who makes under $77,000 will be eligible for this grant. Okay. Yeah, I think there's been some concerns you've you have voiced about not being utilized or or access to as much as it could be. So I think that we we're we're going to give it a shot.
It's a special project.
It's a special project.
So residential property tax rebate, increase funding from 30. So um, residential property tax rebate, um, increase funding from 30 to 45,000. And again, um, that requested increase is in response to suggesting we go from 50% of area income. Excuse me, 50% of area median income to 80% of area median income. Um, and then the residential driveway, driveway grant program, increase funding from 50 to 90,000 dollars. But to, we're gonna recommend at this point in time, um, to keep that income level at 50% of area median income for a couple of reasons. One, this is our newest program. This will only be the second year of the program. Uh, two, there were some driveways that we didn't do um, this year because they had some mitigating circumstances to them. Um, they had survey work. We had a lot of investigating stuff we needed to do. They had a lot of things that, that made us go. Be much easier to do these projects to get a lot, much more bang for our buck. So we'd like to revisit those, those situations. And, and so that's why we are asking for an increase in funding for that.
I, I want to give an example of, just because it was, it dawned on me, I shared this with a couple of staff members earlier today. Uh, on Friday, I was driving up Slater, um, probably with a cheeseburger. Um, and I happened, and it was hot. I mean, it was pretty warm out on Friday. And as, as, I probably shouldn't have said the street, but I was driving up a street in Merriam. And um, with, with a burger that I purchased in Merriam. And I was noticing that it was hot and there was someone that was out there and they were weed eating their, their driveway. And I, and I just kind of watched him as I drove by. And it dawned on me that this was a driveway we had installed. And it, it struck me, and still strikes me because they were weed eating, like with a weed whip, their driveway. Like, that's not, I mean, that's not required. You know what I'm saying? Like, some people cut their grass. And this particular house, even that was sometimes a difficult, but they were out there taking ownership of their driveway. I mean, they were out there trimming their driveway in the 100, dude, put maybe 100, whatever, in, in the hot midday heat. It was lunchtime. And I just thought like, that's why we do this. Like, that's, you know, this, this is a very, this is a very generous program. I mean, I think, I think we would all acknowledge that. But, but in the areas that we're using it, in the places that we're using it. If used correctly, we can multiply the bang for the buck on what it means to the neighbor. And these are people that for, individuals, for, for whatever reason, they couldn't, they, they couldn't do that for themselves. Um, we have income requirements. Clearly, they have, they met those, but they have taken ownership of it. There's a sense of pride in, in their driveway. You know, I mean, that, that, I mean, I have chills just be like, that's, that's what we can do with these grants. We can, we can transform people's lives in ways that, you know, few other communities are willing to do or able to do. And uh, just as a plug for, for some of these grants, just something I literally saw on Friday and was, was moved by, I wanted to share it because I thought it was fantastic. Sorry.
So a, a new program, uh, small proj, small projects grant, requesting 15,000 dollars before. Um, again, as I mentioned, this will be a new program. Uh, we took this from one of our neighbors, I believe it was Roland Park, um, who has a similar program. So what this would be to assist eligible homeowners with small improvements to their home and your property. Indoor, outdoor improvements, any type of improvements. Um, it'd be income based as well. So the income, household income must be 60, 80, or 100% of area median income. The grant allocations would be um, 50,000 to 200, excuse me, 50,000 or 2,000 dollars based on income level again. So um, that slide is backwards. Sorry about that. So if you're at 50%, you would be eligible for a 2,000 dollar grant. If you're at 80%, you get a thousand dollar grant. If you're 100%, you'd be eligible for a 500 dollar grant. Uh, no homeowner, uh, initial investment will be required, required for this program. So again, that's just kind of those small projects that are around that people might need um, help with and assistance with.
For, for those that have been around for a while, this was something that uh, Councilmember Diebold used to ask quite a bit. Like that there were issues of what happens when I need 500 dollars to do something and I, I don't even have that. I mean, clearly this is going to require some feedback and we're gonna have to, you know, administer this to make sure that it's, there's actually work being done. And how are we going to manage it? And those are things that we've talked about. But this is, this is a, um, this is a project that we think are a grant that fills that void for people that just can't even do. Or can't afford some of those very minimal things.
I was also, important, that would be important to me because people, you know, steps, you know, were cracked, steps going up to the front. They're not huge projects, but they're really key projects for people that are elderly and so. But I'm worried about that 2,000 dollars may not be, and I think we're gonna see a lot. That may not, I don't know.
Yeah, I hope we run out of money.
Yeah, we hope, yeah, and also, um, we always have to remember, and this is even a staff sometimes we struggle with. Um, two things have got to happen. You gotta be income eligible and a homeowner. And, and income eligible, that's, you know, this, this level. And then when you start saying homeowner, suddenly the, gets down to that. You know, suddenly you've really, it really is reduced the pool of folks. So um, it'll be interesting to see what kind of response we get for this.
What if you have multiple people living in the same house who are not married? But are participating in the overall life of the house?
It is household income. It is, yes, it is household income. So it's everybody that earns something. Yep, it's household income.
I have one question. When we publish these grants, do we outline what exactly is the 50, 80, or 100% threshold? Is that written out? Okay, so people don't have to try and.
Well, we do that as best we can.
I mean, within reason, but so people don't have to go, oh, have to go find the median income and then.
There's a chart because it's how many kids do you have?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's published with the grant, sorry.
And we use federal guidelines. So I mean, it's, we can always just put a link that we don't ever have to change. It just always goes to federal guidelines.
So another new program, I thought that, that came, that, that staff had is to purchase residential energy savings kits. There's actually, um, these things are out there and exist right now. Uh, kit, kit could contain things such as LED lights, insulated wall plates, uh, and other tools such to, to help reduce water usage. Kits would be available at city hall, community center, city events for a resident to pick up. Estimated cost of a kit would be 30 dollars a kit and um, obviously that would get us about 200 kits. So uh, just kind of, again, little pilot program, see how it go. Be really, uh, again, beneficial for folks to reduce their carbon footprint, reduce their energy usage.
This hearkens back to the take charge challenge.
Yes, it does. That's exactly what I thought of when, uh, when, when that was, when that suggestion was made.
We did that. We gave away stuff like that.
Yep, exactly what popped in my head, first thing. And then the last one is a stormwater grant, uh, 50,000 dollars budgeted. Um, assist, provide assistance to homeowners from stormwater management issues. Um, and, and though again, these are guidelines to be, uh, for a program to be developed and shared with the council at a later date.
Yeah, I'm gonna interrupt and say that I am not sure that we will be able to administer this program. I am not sure what this program will look like, but we are putting it in the budget so we have, so it's there. So if we, if we can develop this, we will. If you will recall, this was a offshoot that Councilmember Neal shared. Um, of uh, conversations we had back in May about um, staff serving in some sort of capacity to help with drainage issues that people have on their, on their properties. We've put a little bit of thought into how we would do this. We don't have a great answer of how we would administer it or what would qualify or, you know, what happens if we help you divert your water? And it changes water flow and it goes to your neighbor now and then your neighbor is gonna sue, I mean, and we'll take ownership. I don't know that we can administer this program. We're gonna try. We're gonna try to work, work something up that we think works well. Um, because we don't want to do it if it doesn't work well. But, but we're putting the money in there so we have it, so we can do our best to see if we can't put some flesh on it. Just because we heard that there were several council members that, that thought that it would be a good idea if we could pull it off. I, I don't know that we can. I'm very skeptical that we can. I, I'd like to find something that would work, but I just, I don't know that we can pull it off. Be quite honest with you, because I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can administer it, but, but the money is there.
I have a question. Are there any precedents of any, not necessarily in the area, but across the country of anyone doing something similar? Any other municipality?
Not, not at the level as I think it was, as it was presented. I mean, like, there are grants out there that if you want to put in a rain garden or things like that. But to have city serve in some sort of professional capacity of what you should and shouldn't be doing on your property with your water, that's.
I wonder if Climate Action KC could help provide some guidance.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we've had a little bit of discussion.
Sure.
You know, I don't think it has to be, and it shouldn't be the city specifically telling somebody what to do. I think there's a way to find where, you know, at most is some best practices.
Sure.
And, but they have to implement specifically with some other help, you know, as.
Sure. But, but that requires, how, how do we check that your berm actually is doing what it's supposed to be doing? Like, how do, how do we, if, if, if it's your gutters, are we just buying your gutters and we just go, yeah, it looks good to me? I mean, I'm not saying we can't figure it out. I'm just saying that every time we kind of, we kind of go, well, what happens when it is here? Well, you know, when we go into the 21st and 22nd option, we, we get to the point where we go, well, this may not be as easy as the other grants to administer. And I'm sure that you will.
But we don't have to.
Because we have money, well, I assume we will have money for it.
But we don't have to do it tonight, right?
We do not have to do it tonight.
Thank you.
So, um.
Are you gonna give us a grant to, oh, we haven't done all of them yet. Okay. Okay.
Um, the next one is a residential tree grant. Uh, this would actually take the place of the tree sale that the city does. So it covers one tree per household. Public Works would work with the residents on proper tree replacement. Uh, must be from approved tree list that the city has. Um, city will provide voucher to cover tree delivery. Excuse me, cover the tree, delivery of the tree and planting and a warranty. Um, and then also included in here as well, um, as you know, we have the island grant program as well. Uh, we would um, expand that to include monument signs for, um, for, for residential neighborhoods. So then.
Brian, real quick, do you know about how much a tree costs to plant? Is it about a thousand dollars a tree?
About 600 bucks for planting and the warranty and all that. We're open to about 85 trees.
Can I, why, why are we doing it this way instead of the tree sale?
This gets you a tree planted, delivered and warranted rather than 15 dollars off of a tree?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm saying, does that mean that the tree sale has not been effective? That's kind of my question.
I would say that kind of what, why, if you can get a tree for almost free versus a tree, only 15 dollars off a tree.
I can't plant a tree at my house, so.
Could you buy a tree tree if the tree's gone?
I don't, well, but the Homes Association could do that, but if it's one per house, I don't know. Anyway, it just seems different than what we've ever done, so.
But how little, I mean, I guess like, I don't live in a neighborhood with an HOA, so how many HOAs are there versus other neighborhoods too?
I have several.
So I'm just curious about the tree grants. Love the program. I'm all for it, but I'm wondering so. 2024, hey, that's a 2024 grant.
Right.
Next year.
We've already had that stuff, sorry.
Hey, we can't give you everything all at once. No, that, that, that's, that actually is a grant that we talked about and we, we pushed it to 2024. So we'd have at least a new grant, so we don't have to, yeah. No, that's a, we've, that, we absolutely talked about that, yeah. And if you'd like, we can put it in this year.
So now can I ask, so what's the grant total of what it used to be? Awesome.
We're almost there.
Okay. I'll do a drum roll if you want.
Uh, and then also just point out that we also have these other uh, programs that are administered by other entities, the rental assistant, the utility assistants, United Community Services and Shawnee Mission Cares. Nothing has changed on these, but just wanted to remind you that we have these. So whenever we go through and we add all this, we come up with a total of 558,500. I should have wrote down the amount of last year's grants, but this is an approximately 200,000 dollar increase.
50%?
So.
Thoughts? Does this meet what the council asked us to do at the last meeting? Okay, sure.
So, um. Just to go through some of the other funds, the bond and interest fund. This um, projects out what we'll be paying and about 3.3 million 267,000 in principal and interest in 2023. And I threw this uh, slide in here because I think it really shows um, a story. And this is a debt per capita. So you take a city's debt and divide it by its population. And you can see that Merriam on here is the second lowest in debt per capita. You know, Overland Park has much more debt, but they have many more people and so that, that kind of throws that off. But I think the interesting thing that you see on here is how steadily ours is beginning to go down. And um, you know, just as a reminder, in 2027, if we show you this graph, 2027, December 31st, 2027. We don't have a bar because we will have all of our debt paid for. So each year, that's dropping between around 300,000 a year, that debt per capita. So anyway.
We're, we're gonna be, we're gonna beat Overland Park eventually.
Exactly.
I, I think it's also interesting, if you look at Olathe, I don't know what their debt is, but if you figure that that's, if their debt's, you know, 1,500 per resident. And they're 100 and, I don't know, 60,000 people, they've, they clearly have some debt.
Olathe's, Olathe's debt is 256 million.
And ours is how much right now?
And ours right now is 16 million. So.
That's what happens when you don't take care of your streets and try to do it all at once. You start borrowing money like that.
Okay, transient guest tax, um. We have uh, revenues of 866,000. You'll see that we're projecting an increase in that other taxes, which is our uh, transient guest tax. Really, that 300,000 was what we had during the pandemic and that's just going back up to uh, regular, normal operations.
Sorry if I could add to that. Just as a reminder, we've talked about, uh, and I've shared this with the council, that one of the allowable uses for the ARPA funds was directed towards hospitality, hospitality industry. We've talked about a hotel grant. If we were to use those funds, they would likely end up in the transient guest tax. We'll have to do a budget amendment. We're not doing as part as the budget, part of the budget, but that is still something that we're putting some flesh on that program. Uh, and it's quite possible, we'll come back at the end of the year, at the beginning of next year. And we'll, we'll need to do a budget amendment for, for the, which is not a big deal, just as a heads up.
Equipment reserve fund, we are looking at capital equipment of 657,000 next year. So we have some public works equipment, a fire, obviously not a truck, but a fire truck. And tasers, police vehicle. We've got some technology replacements, Campbell Park swing set. Uh, and then you'll see that we have some sustainability projects. It's getting too late to say that word. Uh, for 250,000, we are doing. word. For 250,000, we're doing a study right now of the facilities that are in the city to see if energy efficiency improvements could be made. These funds would actually enable us to implement some of those projects if, in fact, the study comes back that some things would make sense. Yes, yes.
So for example, there might be several, but we're looking at radiant heat at Public Works. Is that something that would, you know, faster doors at Public Works? Can we decommission some of our HVAC units in some of these buildings a year or two early and realize savings if we replace them? So I mean, there's, that's what that would go towards. Nothing other than that. And it's in the equipment reserve. If we don't use it, it goes, it's one year at the end of the year. It kind of goes back into the pool and it gets reshuffled up again for other assets that we need to buy. But we are doing a study of is there, are there a handful of improvements that we could make and improve our sustainability?
Do you have a question?
I was gonna say, ideally, I mean, I think these projects would have a return on investment, maybe not five, 10 years, but they should, they shouldn't be a wash, like out the door.
Yeah, that'd be the plan.
Who's doing the study? Like, is it a, like, who's doing the study of the sustainability?
That's still in the works.
Oh, got it. Okay, sorry.
Our, right, our facility maintenance supervisor or superintendent is kind of working on getting some contractors in place to bid on that and look into that.
Capital Improvement Fund. We have, if you look at the second section, the second line, you have capital expenditures. You can see that 21 was a smaller year for capital improvement projects. This year we have more. And then in 2023, we've got even more projects going. So we're beginning to move along with those. That's kind of how, the nature of the beast, they go up and down. Yes.
Is any of that increased, uh, to Upper Turkey Creek funding?
That starts in 24, does it not?
I believe so, yeah.
Right.
Majority of that's downtown Mariam.
Right, but it isn't. One thing that since we talked capital improvement plan with you, we've had some updates from the county, and they've indicated that our 2023 cars funding for Mariam Drive, Johnson Drive to 55th Street, they've reduced that funding by 734,000. They, 75th Street from Switzer to Antioch, they decreased it by 250,000. And then for 2024, our 49th Street, Antioch to Switzer, they reduced that 221,000.
Because everybody's asking for cars money. So they went to, what's it, 85%?
Eighty percent, we're all, yeah. So we're 400 and some percent.
I think you can explain that. It's kind of a, it's kind of a formula, but.
Yeah, but the cities don't ask for a lot of money, 80%. And so the city of Mariam's at 434%. We've been getting all, all of our money. So they're not going to give us the 50%, so they're reducing us down to 40%, things like that. Yeah, we've always got our 50%, yes.
We've always had our funding.
Yeah, so we are.
I would say we're being penalized. They're just enforcing an existing, because it's an existing rule.
Correct. It's always been there.
Yeah, it's always been there. It's just not everybody always puts in cars projects. So they, they have it, so they give a choice. And now everybody wants cars projects, so they're saying, okay, there's this rule. I had to look up that rule. I think we've never done that in all the years I've been here. I thought they just made the rule up. I didn't know it existed.
So 2023, it's reduced by a million dollars with what we're getting.
Thing to keep in mind is we are likely willing to bust the county bank on that Turkey Creek grant.
We'll give it back.
Yeah, we're, we're good. We're going to get it back on some other end with the smack watershed.
And right now in the CIP, these are the only projects we've adjusted. We've left the 25 cars through 27, all at the previous funding. But I mean, I think that's something that we have to consider as kind of a risk, that this may become the new norm. And next year, we may be telling you about some others. Okay, so this shows the overall budget, if it's adopted as proposed. Total expenditures would be 33 million, 330,000. We would wind up with an ending fund balance of just under 31 million dollars. The majority of that, 21.7 million of it in the Capital Improvement Fund to fund your future projects. You want to accumulate the money. So when you have projects like Upper Turkey Creek, you have the funds available. So are there any questions on any of that so far?
I just want to, can we send that through slide?
Yes, 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 absolutely. Okay. Okay. The property tax revenue. So now we come to the revenue neutral rate and property tax discussion. If the current budget assumes that we don't roll back the mill levy, and so we would have a property tax levy of 6.8 million. This is an increase of a levy over last year of 613,000 or 9.8%. No change in the mill rate, assessed valuation of 248 million. This is where our assessed property values are. We have 51% in commercial, 46% in residential, 3% in other. Again, the revenue neutral rate is the rate that you need to get to, to generate the very same amount of property tax this year as what you generated last year. And it doesn't allow for any kind of a CPI growth. And we looked and the inflation CPI growth in 2021 was 6.5%. And it doesn't allow, an allowance for new construction. And new construction increased that mill levy by 2.1%. Or not mill levy, sorry, it's getting late, the assessed valuation. So again, the way the revenue neutral rate works, if last year we had the assessed valuation of 225 million, the mill rate of 27.665, total property tax levy of 6.2 million, the county provided us an updated assessed valuation and calculated that if we're not going to generate any additional property tax, then our mill rate needs to be 25.188. If we plan to in any way exceed that mill rate at all, we have to notify the county that we're going to exceed that revenue neutral rate. If we keep it at the same mill levy, which is what the budget's based on, it would generate 6.8 million, which is an additional 613,000. These Johnson County cities have all indicated in the county itself that they intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now, some of these entities very well may choose to not keep their current mill rate. I mean, they may be rolling it back a quarter of a mill or whatever, but all of them are at least to some degree exceeding their actual revenue neutral rate. And so at this point, where we're kind of at is we need a head nod on, let me go ahead and go here. On July 20th on the calendar, we need to notify the county clerk whether or not we're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And we actually need to also tell them the maximum rate that we are considering. And so I kind of need a head nod. Now, that doesn't mean if you, if you elect it to make it, if you elect to make it the 27.665, if you say yes, and right now we think that. When we come back here in August and adopt the budget, you can make it less than that. You could make it 25. You could make it whatever. You just couldn't make it any larger. If tonight you say, no, we're not going to go any higher than 26, you can't go any higher than 26. And so really, we need to know the maximum that you would even consider.
No, is do you want to roll them back? That's what we need to know.
27.665, change in the levy.
You could, but we have to build the budget around that. So when we come back and present it, I mean, we need to know sooner than later what you want it to be.
Can you, for this deadline, July 20th, put in that we're not going to exceed the current mill rate and.
Continue to debate it? Sure, I believe so.
That's what I would recommend.
We would not be rolling the neutral.
We will not be rolling the neutral, but we will not exceed 27.665. And we still need to work on whether we can.
And what, what would you like staff to do to help facilitate or prepare us for that conversation?
Well, that's a good question. Might need a little more time.
I'm full, I'm full of good questions.
I can tell you what not to do. We have a assessed valuation on residential properties of around 13%.
Sure.
With virtually no new construction. So that's all raised, assessed value. We cannot move that on to all 13% on to our homes.
Okay.
So something less than 13%.
Something less than.
So the mill, the city mill rate, well, we need to cut that.
Is that, is that.
13% on to our homes.
Is that consensus?
Is that all being passed to homeowners or is it also being passed to commercial?
Commercial is much smaller. They're all starting to face the problem.
Yeah.
So the ball though that's going to hit, the rest of it.
Yeah, but if, if we roll the mill back 13%, it's not going to, it's not going to be 13% for the homeowner because the county and the state aren't rolling it back 13%.
We can't deal.
I, I know, but when you say when we roll it back, it rolls back a small prorated portion of that to the homeowner. Yeah.
But it also benefits businesses, just to make sure we're clear. Yeah.
Here's the problem that we've had over the last few years. I mean, I've, we've been looking at this several times. And it's kind of a game of chicken. You know, nobody, everybody says, well, our piece doesn't really matter because as long as other pieces, unless they roll it back, you know, why should we be more involved? But at some point, we're getting to a point, I think, where we've got enough people, residential property tax on year after year are getting hit. And some people are on fixed incomes. It's just, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty hard. And for them to absorb disproportionately the increase, I think we just even moving some back says, we understand and we're doing something. I also recognize with the grants increase.
Anybody that makes less than 77 grand a year doesn't have to pay city property tax anymore. And will buy their driveway.
I think we should have a discussion about it. It's just.
So, so just to be clear, if we, if we elect to roll back the mill rate, we have to cut out of the budget because the proposed budget is based on 27.665?
Yes, we would, we would likely, we would, yeah.
We got to cover it somewhere.
You got, you got an assistant position, you got a new FTE in there, you've got a bunch of grant money in there, you've got fund, you've got fund balances that are in there for, you got a Turkey Creek project that is going to need probably several million dollars more in the CIP. You just lost a million. Well, depending on what you want to roll it back. If you want to roll it back 13%, you've lost probably way more than a million in a five-year CIP.
You don't need to roll it back all 13%.
No, that, yeah, I wouldn't be proposing that. I just think it's also sensitive.
What would you like us to base it on? So we know, so we can come back and give you something to chew on?
We just kind of looked at some of the new budget stuff tonight and what you're proposing. And I, you know, I think, I like to think about it when I'm half asleep.
I can tell you, go back to that slide we had that showed inflation and new construction. Hit that number.
Eight point six.
The thing I like about what we've seen so far.
What number? What number are you talking about, Bruce?
6.5 plus 2.1. You make an allowance for, for inflation, you make allowance for new construction.
Sure.
So show us something that's 7.6.
Eight points.
We do have.
Whatever the math is.
Come on, hear the numbers there.
Yeah, the biggest increases I saw that we were looking.
How about something like this?
This right here depicts, okay, if you take 25.188, which is the revenue neutral rate, you add in the new construction change, you would be adding in half a mil. If you add in 6.5% for inflation, you're adding one and a half mils. So you would have a property tax levy of 27.217. Our current mill rate is 27.665.
It's almost a half mil.
It'd be half a mil.
I can, I can explain that to constituents.
And this is about the best we're going to be able to produce without coming forward and just saying we picked a magic number. This is a number that we can root in something.
I kind of, I kind of agree with, I agree with them that that's at least a.
You know, come close to that. You don't quite get there, but.
Understanding, though, that that, that might mean that the grant money that was proposed comes down.
Might get scaled down.
110,000 dollars.
That, well, doesn't have to, we'll see. I mean, I think we've got some extra money somewhere.
The stormwater management grants $50,000. We can't administer that program anyway, so.
But what does that mean to me? To me, the homeowner, what does that mean?
It depends on the value of your home. I mean.
Well, but, all right, what's the average home? We always have an average 250 now?
Right.
I mean, and so what is that? Three dollars?
Six dollars a month. I don't know. It's not, it's not a lot.
I feel like we need to just leave the mill rate the way it is. I just, I'm much more comfortable with that.
We cannot raise 13% on our homeowners.
We're not? What, how are we raising? It depends on what your valuation of your home is.
Well, I get that. I get that. But we got to do our part in controlling this.
No, I don't, I don't agree.
The problem is that the value is not a liquid, is not a liquid asset. So, you know, you need to have, they're going to have to pay for it out of their cash.
Yes, that is true. That's part of the cost of owning a home.
We can offset some of that cash. I mean, so we, we have tried to create mitigating. Yeah.
Look, I prefer to think about it for a minute before you give an answer because at least for me, because it's 11.5.
Sure.
Okay, what if, I heard a general consensus for this. What if staff notifies the county that we exceed to, we intend to exceed, the maximum would be the current mill rate of 27.665? And then, if we go back here, on August 22nd is when we will have a public hearing to consider exceeding it and to adopt the budget. Between now and then, at one of the city council meetings, we can bring back some options and some additional information. But for now, I think, I think we need a head nod that it's okay to, we are going to exceed the maximum would be the current mill rate. Okay. And we can make that happen. And that's all that we have tonight.